It is 6:00 PM on August the 23rd, 24th, correction. And I'll call the meeting of the Committee of the Whole together. All council members are present. We also have two members of the Recreation Board in the audience, plus a number of staff members. We are here this evening to provide a recommendation to council regarding the Hobart Arena renovation and expansion project at a cost not to exceed $7,350,000. Mr. Seiler, I believe, will be giving the presentation tonight. And we do have a few slides here on a PowerPoint. So we'll ask council members to just kind of slide over so everybody can see the screen.
to council, we'll just give a real quick brief overview of what we've really been working on since we discussed this last. And as you may recall, back in 2014, we contracted with Crossroads Consulting to do a feasibility study of the arena to determine what direction we should head with regard to the operation and updates to the facility. And really, that information came back very favorable, that for a 65-year-old building, it was in excellent condition. And venues generally of this type have a lifespan of approximately 30 years. This being 65 years, obviously, has outlived, you know, the majority of most venues of this type. The other thing they indicated was that many venues that are significantly less in years than what Hobart Arena is, they do recommend at times to demo and to start over. So they were very impressed with kind of how the building's been maintained over time. Following that feasibility study back in July of last year, there was the open house workshop where we gave council members an opportunity to walk through and look at all of the results from that feasibility study, along with the Park Board and the Recreation Board. At that time, it was determined to move forward with the project. And at that time, we began to determine who we were going to work with to work on the design of the facility. And MSA Architects out of Cincinnati were selected to design this project. Since that time, we've had a group of staff members, along with President of the Recreation Board Marty Hobart, working with MSA on the design. And tonight, we also have a representative from MSA Architects here, Joe Northcutt, who may be able to answer some questions that maybe some of us staff may not be able So the primary goals of the design were to increase the, or improve, the traffic flow in the venue for the user patron experience, and also from the back of house for our staff in order to be able to operate more efficiently. And the thing that was going to allow us to do both of those things was an improvement in traffic flow throughout the venue. Currently, traffic flow is very poor, especially when we have larger scale events with a large amount of people in the venue. So some of the things that we're looking to do on the front of house, we will be removing areas in the corners of the corridors. So if you look at where they're pointing there, in those corners, all of those areas will be removed to widen the corridors, to improve the traffic flow there. Also, over time, there've been a lot of added storage areas underneath the seating areas, concession stands, storage areas, offices, production areas, Hall of Fame, trophy display cases. Those are all going to be removed to, again, just make the corridor feel as though it's been widened. That will allow people who want to just stand and congregate and socialize to be able to stand under those areas while the traffic flow can continue to flow through the corridor. The other thing that we'll look to do is, on the south end of the building, will be to add a lobby area, which will be closest to the majority of our parking, parking lot being on the south end of the building. It will add a second lobby. We'll continue to use the front lobby as well, so it'll disperse the crowds to two different main entry points. And actually, the original plan of the arena had the entry point on the end of the barrel roof versus the side, which is where the current lobby is located now. So it kind of goes hand in hand with what the original design of the venue was to begin By adding the second lobby, we will be able to take the south side of the front lobby and make that ADA accessible with an ADA handicap ramp, so that people will be able to get in the front of the building, the Adams Street side, and get down into the corridor. Currently, they're not able to do that, so we have to take people around to the ends of the building in order to get them into the main part of the building. The new design, the orange areas, there'll be five different concession stands, and there will be additional restrooms added, and I'll go into a little more details of these here in a moment. But the placement of these will be as such so that people do not have to walk all the way around the corridor necessarily to get to a concession stand or to get to a restroom. Right now, there's such a limited number of concession stands available that they have to walk a significant distance to get there, and as a result, traffic is having to pass through the corridors more so than maybe they need to. And on those concession areas, which will now be on the exterior walls, there'll be queuing areas for people that are waiting in line, so that they will be not standing necessarily in the corridor itself, but will be standing in those queuing areas, again, so not to block traffic as people are trying to pass by. On the back of house area where our staff is, which is generally on the north end of the building, all of our maintenance areas will now be consolidated, which is indicated by the gray section there. Right now, our maintenance shops are on the backside of the building, and there are two in two separate locations. So whenever we have a changeover, in order to set up or tear down, we have to go outside of the building and around on the north end of the building, and then come back in at the overhead door that's located at the north. So they have to pass outside, and during the winter time, this can be a challenge. So some of the areas that were the focal point based on the feasibility study, one was the restrooms. I don't know if any of you have had the opportunity to attend an event that we've maybe had more than 1,500 or so people in the building, but that's usually about the point when we see an issue with our limited capacity of restroom fixtures. The current code, we're at less than half of what the current code indicates. So by adding the additional restrooms, which are located primarily on the back hallway, all of the green areas, and then at the northwest corner right there, that will get our fixtures for men's and women's restrooms up to the code requirements. Currently, during events when we have larger crowds than over about 2,000, we generally have to bring in port-alets, or port-a-johns, as Mr. Schweizer calls them, to accommodate the numbers of folks that are in the building. So currently, back in the maintenance shop, we set up up to five port-alets to accommodate the load that's needed for accommodating the number of folks that are in the venue. So our proposed design counts will go from currently 17 men's up to 47, and from 13 women's up to 47. So code is right at about 50. So we're significantly increasing the numbers of those there. The other major item that we've really tried to focus on has been the kitchen and concessions areas. Currently, right now, we have one main concession area that's utilized during most any event, and it has three points of sale. It's located on the south end of the lobby, or the south end of the corridor, I'm sorry. So the goal here is to increase our numbers of points of sale by having five different concession stands, which means that people in any quarter of the building will only have to travel to that quarter of the building to get to a concession stand. And we'll be increasing the number of points of sale to 17 for the entire building. And then in addition, during the tour, I don't know if any of you were able to and have the chance to look at the kitchen area, but it's terribly inadequate for servicing the venue. So there will be a kitchen added down on the north end that will, one, service all of the concession stands in the building, and, two, it will be directly accessible to the multipurpose room that I'll get to in a moment, so that we'll be able to accommodate that particular facility and be able to accommodate outside caters that we use for events and/or for other potential business options there. The multipurpose room will be able to accommodate up to approximately 220 people. It could be split into two rooms potentially. We're still working on that design. Of course, the 220 will be contingent upon the way in which the room is set up, whether it's for a speaking engagement or a wedding reception, for example, where there's tables set up. Obviously, the numbers of people that it'll accommodate would vary depending upon that. But the multipurpose room will give us the ability to rent out and generate potentially another revenue source. And then it'll also serve our purposes during concert-type of events, where currently, we utilize a garage area, which is on the back end of the building, and we set up pipe and drape, and we use that for a catering banquet area. So one is, it doesn't present very well, but secondly, it's front of house, so it's off of a public corridor. Whereas where we're locating this will be at the back of house, so it won't be accessible necessarily to the public. Terms of the dressing rooms, we will have four dressing rooms. They will all be located back of house. Again, from an event perspective, that will be a benefit. Right now, currently, we have two of our dressing rooms that are located off of the back corridor. So during events, they are directly accessible by the public. So we're really only limited to two dressing rooms backstage during events right now. And then the south entrance, this really was one of the components that really drove a lot of the other parts of the design. Again, just from a traffic flow perspective, allowing people to enter the building closest to where the majority of the people park. It gives us a larger lobby than where we have currently at the front. The front lobby is relatively small and becomes a challenge during larger-scale events, so now we're splitting the people into two areas. And with the south one being even larger than the current one, that will significantly help. They'll also have box office windows that'll be located to the exterior of the building, like most other venues have. So they'll be located to the exterior, but also then to the interior of the front lobby and the south lobby. Also in the south lobby, from day-to-day operations, we have people that come in continually registering for programs, shelter reservations, just information. So we'll have an area there that would serve as kind of a service desk to accommodate people as they come into the building. And then during event nights, that would also serve as kind of a customer service, lost and found, can serve many purposes that we really don't have the space for currently. And then the smaller concession stand that's located in that area can serve us day-to-day with just some basic offerings that we can operate, you know, during public skating sessions, during youth hockey practices and games, high school hockey practices and games. And we'll just, we're going to kind of have to work with that to see what the need is for each of those different events, and whether we would open up maybe another one or two of those stands in addition to that. And then right beside that, we have a significant need. We continually receive calls for people that are interested in birthday parties and parties for their children during public skating sessions. So that space would serve for that purpose, but in addition to that, we really don't have a space where we are able to meet with our staff to do in-service trainings just prior to an event. We generally are trying to do that in the seating areas, and that's generally happening during a time in which it's not really conducive for that, when they're doing sound checks for events. And there's just a lot of things happening out there that it's very disruptive and difficult to conduct that in that space. And then some of the other capital improvement items that were discussed as part of the feasibility study that we planned to tackle as part of this project are to fix some of the roof decking and roof leaks. There's some areas in the exterior walls that we need to repair. The flooring throughout the majority of the venue will be replaced. The lighting over the main floor in the arena, as well as really everything throughout the venue, will be updated and changed over to LED lighting. We will do some additional steelwork over the north part of the floor to accommodate better the events that we have coming in that need to rig sound and lighting for their events. We'll do a couple repairs back in the compressor room, which accommodates the ice rink. There's a couple components of that system that are still original to when it was built in 1950. We'll be replacing the water lines throughout the venue for all of the domestic water and the water heaters. The scoreboards need replacing, and we're working on to what level we'll be doing that at. So the overall square footage of the venue currently is at 51,000 square feet. The additional square footage for the proposed areas is an additional 26,000 square feet. So the areas that we'll be adding on would be the two concession stands at the front, the south entrance, and then the entire north end, which is also inclusive of the multipurpose room. So the back two areas will be repurposed on the east side, from maintenance shops to bathroom and concessions areas. We plan to bid the project out with the food and kitchen concessions equipment separate from the construction bid itself. And then that would also include, separate from the construction bid, would be going out and securing a POS system for the concessions areas. They've indicated to us that the construction timeline would be approximately 10 to 12 months. And so it's just a matter of, you know, timeframe of when everything would be able to be accomplished to begin moving forward with that part of the project. We anticipate there's probably a couple projects that we're looking at, and we're working through that right now with the architects, that we would bid as some alternates, with the hopes that we'd be able to accomplish all of those alternates as well. But that would obviously be dependent upon how favorable the bids would come in. I believe that's really it. I wanted to, we got a couple renderings that we received just here very recently from the architects for some interior views of the venue. And then I wanted to show you this. This was the original rendering from the architect back in 1947, I believe. You can see the main entrance point was originally designed--
One second. Can you turn on the lights, please, and maybe turn this off so we can see those?
So the entrance in the initial designs was located at the south, or at the end of the barrel roof versus what currently, the way it was actually built, it was built on the side of the building. So that's kind of what the design is currently, the proposal. And the renderings over here by Jill are, this shot here would be the south end of the building with that addition. So these box office windows would be located right here. And then the main entry point would be here on the south end. You can see this build-out here would be that concession stand coming off the front. And then there's the multipurpose room down on the other end of the venue.
Ken? I just had two quick questions, and then I'll go around to council members for questions. The displays that are currently in there, do you have a plan to, or a place for those, or will they be totally moved out of the building?
The displays, meaning the Hall of Fame displays?
Right.
The Hall of Fame displays, what we're looking at right now is that they would be located here on each side of this main entrance, as people would come into the south end of the building. They'll be modified slightly from the standpoint that they won't have necessarily the depth that they do currently. Again, just, we're trying to maximize crowd, or flow of traffic. So they're going to be more of, maybe smaller items that could be displayed, along with obviously the plaques.
And then shower rooms, locker rooms, for things like hockey and different things? Did I--
Yeah, so there's four of them that are at the north end of the building.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Mrs. Snee, questions?
I just want to confirm, you said that the entrance that is now the entrance to the west is going to be made ADA accessible, then obviously the new entrance would be ADA accessible, even though it won't have a ramp? Is it just going to be the same level as the building?
The elevation at the front of the venue is higher than at the south end, so the south entrance would be ADA accessible. And what we're planning to do would be is to eliminate the box office on the south side of the front lobby, make that a ramp, and then we'll still have our ticket booth for the front lobby located over here on this side, which is currently there right now.
Okay. But then the majority of the ticket booths and things would be in that new entrance that you--
Only two windows here, and then two on the exterior.
Okay.
Thank you for that. Mrs. Zoda, questions at this point?
I have none.
Mr. Clark?
Yes, I have a couple. Thank you. I appreciate seeing Kerry Slater along with Marty Hobart. Thank you very much for being here. I'm glad to see you continually support the project and the good work that the Recreation Board and Mr. Seiler has done. With regard to the box office outside, Ken, on the south end, will that be protected from the weather at all, or will people just walk up all-weather and--
Yes, there will be--
I can't see the bottom, Mrs. Rhodes, so I can't.
Yes, so there will be an overhang--
Okay.
--over those two windows right there, yes. And there'll be one over here, the same, to make it look balanced, but this will be an overhang directly over those two windows, yes.
And you'll still maintain the availability to be able to get on the internet and get your tickets in advance, et cetera, et cetera?
Yes. Most, depending upon the type of event it is, dictates the number of people that purchase online versus maybe the night of the show.
Okay. Will this add to the amount of seating that will be available for events?
The seating will not be impacted. It remains the same, the same as it is currently.
And will this add to the availability for your organization to have the ability to bring in different venues?
I think that it will certainly allow us to do more events, and I think our level of events not necessarily will be impacted in terms of the level of act. I mean, our seating capacity is our seating capacity.
Right.
But I think it's going to give us more ability to secure additional acts at those same levels. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, a better quality of act, different types of venues, different--
Yeah, I think, I think what happens is, is there's feedback out there on the road between groups and booking agents and those type of things as to when they have positive experiences in venues. And so I think all of these things will lend itself to that.
Okay, good. Especially being remodeled, I would hope that they would add to the interest in different venues coming here. You know, a new draw, as it were. I appreciate you addressing the scoreboards. Will this, any parking, will any of the parking be eliminated at all for this?
Parking will be very minimally impacted, just on the north end of the building, where So this part here, on the north end, where the kitchen area is, will remove, or displace, I think, about five or six parking spaces. So yeah, the park building, you can see the, kind of the outline where the park building is. So there's about five spaces right in this area right here that'll be impacted, but the majority of the parking here will not be. And for events, that's, I mean, it's certainly not ideal. We have a shortage of parking around the venue. There's no question about it. I mean, we, when we have a full-scale event, we're beyond maxed, between our parking lot, the park, the stadium parking lot, the North Market Street ballfields, even parking lots across the bridge. But this doesn't really impact with the exception of about five or six spots from a parking perspective.
And you said the whole renovation will take 10 to 12 months from beginning to end?
That's what the architects are indicating to us, and that also is with us continuing to operate as best we can. That's certainly going to be a challenge, but we'll work as best we can with the contractors and vice versa to make it happen. And we, the architects are fully aware of that, and in their previous experience with similar-type venues, they say that's certainly the norm, to continue to operate and function as renovations are being done.
I'm sure you'll endeavor to persevere, and that's important. Thank you, Mrs. Baker, that's all.
Mrs. Zoda, you indicated that you had another question.
Yes, I wanted to know, the Zane Boney is now parked in that back hallway?
Yes, it is.
Will it get moved out to that gray area?
It's going--
Yes, it will.
And it'll go in and out? Okay.
Yes, it will.
Who's worried about the Zane Boney?
Currently, you know, like if I would go in in the middle of the week to pick up a ticket for something, I have to go to the second floor. Will you have someone on the first floor for ticketing throughout the weekdays and things? Are you going to, you know, shift staff from the second floor to the first floor? Is there going to be--
That's, that's our plan. Our plan is to have a staff member who primarily manages our ticketing to have an office that's there with the ticket office, so that we have the ability to sell tickets from that lobby space during normal business hours.
And do you look for increased staffing, being necessary with this expansion?
Related to the ticketing piece?
No, just related to the expansion and-- No, just related to the expansion in general. Do you think that there will be increased staffing?
That's a tough question, I think, to answer at this point.
Okay.
I don't necessarily know where this is going to lead us.
Right, okay.
We're, you know, we're challenged currently with our staff, with the staff numbers and numbers that we have, both from the office side and also from the operations side. So, by adding, you know, adding these amenities and what potential business this could drive, I don't know that I can answer that question right now.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Kennedy?
Thank you. Just a couple. First of all, Ken, your intent is to keep your offices where they're currently located, correct?
That is correct. Okay, so, that was, that was mentioned in the feasibility study as one of the recommendations, but that was not part of this particular plan.
Okay.
So, our goal is to have a space to accommodate people that are coming in to do their registrations, shelter reservations, all those kind of things in this lobby as well as being able to sell tickets to events.
Okay.
In that space. So, there shouldn't, other than, you know, meetings or those type of things, there shouldn't be a significant need for the public to have to traipse up the steps.
Second question, multi-purpose room, how close is it to Adam Street?
Joe, you happen to know what that distance might be?
So, this is, this is the existing sidewalk.
Is it?
Yeah, so, here's your turnaround.
It's our loop drive there.
And then, this is sidewalk. This is 16 feet right here. So, at this point, you're within probably five feet of the sidewalk at this corner.
Okay.
And this is actually 16 feet right here on the western side to accommodate kind of, if there is an event at the multi-purpose room, then they kind of have a porch to go out if it's nice weather, but they go in places like this.
Okay. Okay.
So, he's kind of saying from here to here.
I was trying to get perspective with that because it looks like it's-
Yeah, so, this is 16 feet right here. So, I mean, if you, you know, yeah, you're looking at about 16 feet, I would say, to actually Adam Street. So, Adam Street, the traffic is right here.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. The new locker rooms, the four of them, all of them identical size?
They're all identical size.
Okay. They'll hold a whole team?
They'll hold up to 22-ish people.
Okay. Hockey, hockey team. I know, that's the, that's the issue I hear now. We can't get our whole hockey team in.
We're relying on Joe. He's indicated to us that these spaces are adequate for high school or, you know, adult players to fit a full team into these locker rooms.
Okay.
So, I'm relying on their expertise for later to that.
And so, the locker rooms are also, they're multi-cast, so, like they are now. We've worked on the layout of the locker rooms such that when the events come in, then this is also the changing room for the, for the events and for their members.
Okay.
And for it to be a little bit nicer than maybe just a locker room.
Yeah. Thank you, that's all I-
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes, I want to commend you on-
It could work in the building a wall underneath the, where the overhead door is to potentially later accommodate a dock. Our initial plan was to have one of the doors be a dock and the other one to be at ground level.
But also, due to the park building and the location of their door, it wasn't going to work. I mean, that was another conflict that we discussed and then, that's another reason that we eliminated the dock.
Correct. And because their access to their, one of their accesses into their building is an overhead door right here. So, if they were to do a dock, it would have had to have a wall that would have gone out to like here, they wouldn't have been able to access this door. And could you refresh me on the number of people you can entertain in a venue whether- An end-stage concert where the stage would be down on this end, we can accommodate about 3,100. That's maxing out with people sitting on the sides of the stage. So, some shows we can do that with, some we can't. That's dependent upon their production because it creates obstruction sometimes depending upon what they have set up. And then, the other option you mentioned is when we put a stage over here and play to, you know, the west half of the building and that's approximately 1,900. And that's the whole handle.
Thank you. Mr. Phillips?
I don't have any at this time, thank you.
Mr. Twiss?
And we are currently doing the landscaping and irrigation as in-house or as an alternate? As an alternate.
Then, the other question, will there be signs that maybe stop traffic flow on that north end side? Because a lot of times, I see people going from Adam Street to the pool. But now, with all of this there, does that make it sort of-
You can't get through there, which the park department actually likes and it's really, we like it to some, in some regards too because the, people are flying through there.
Yes.
And so, this eliminates that ability to do that. There'll be some bollards put in between the two buildings there so that they'll be removable. So, vehicles could pass through there if we needed that to happen, but public wouldn't be able to do that.
It'll be 12 feet from park board to the building.
And then, does any of this cost include replacing any of the floor seating or will we still just have the plastic chairs? Is there any-
That is in the five-year capital group.
Okay, that's what I thought, just checking. That's it.
The plastic chairs have been there, I think, since the early 80s. That's definitely what we're talking about here. There's about, what do we determine that's, how far is that off of the parking lot, Joe? 20-ish? The building's about 20 feet from the parking lot. The old building or with the new addition? With the addition.
And then, the other thing that we are discussing would be potentially to divert traffic would be to make the first row all mannequins. So, it'd be very limited on amount of traffic that's actually going in that first row.
Okay.
I mean, the plan would be certainly to still use the front lobby as well. It's not, it's not that we're eliminating that as a space. We're trying to eliminate congestion of everyone coming into one main point.
You mentioned the landscaping being an alternate. Do you have any numbers with that at all yet as far as what that would cost as an additional? And I, as an alternate, I assume that you would do it if you had the money within this budget and if not, why, it would be delayed?
I mean, the plan would be to try to do it in-house and I'm hoping at a less cost than maybe what it would potentially be as part of the project.
Okay.
Do you remember what that number was, Joe? $40,000.
Do we lose the big trees that are out front there right now?
We lose-
We lose the tree, couple of trees that are here. We-
I think one over there.
Maybe one, but there's a couple of larger ones over here. So, we lose the trees for multi-purpose room in this north entrance.
There's a small one on this north end and there's two on the south end that we'll need to replace.
And not to muddy, not to muddy the waters, but as a future project perhaps, we had discussed a second sheet of ice at one point. With this expansion, will there still be room on that north side for that type of building? And would it require removal of the park building that's currently there?
So, the addition is being built in a manner in which it can accommodate extending the venue to add the second sheet of ice. The second sheet of ice will be very tight in the space. The park building would definitely have to go because it would sit in that particular area. But based on what MSA is telling us on, at least preliminary, preliminarily with what the design of that roughly is, it would fit in that space on a slight angle because of the way Stoughton Road runs on an angle off of Adam Street. So, this is built in a way in which the Zamboni would pass through here. This wall is being built in a way in which it could be removed to accommodate initially the storage space. There was an additional pie shape on here that will be cut out. So, that will be added back on and then accommodate the rink on this end. So, the Zamboni would pass through to service both rinks, straight through from one venue to the other.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any further questions from council at this point? Mrs. Zoda?
The hallway down below where you showed where the Zamboni would go, would that connect as a walkway? Where those two blue rooms are?
You're talking here?
Yes.
That is, we've been, we've discussed that as well recently, is to what the public pathway would be through to the potential second rink. The thought is, is either through here, however, there's back of house area is here, so the thought potentially would be to bring it around and then connect to the other building through this hallway, which would be more of a public space.
And does this plan include signage for the whole building? Directional signage and-
Yes.
Okay. All right, our task then is to move this forward or not. So, I think the easiest way to do that, I think, Mrs. Knight, is going to be a roll call if we could of just, to make sure that everyone is on board with it.
Well, I'll have to do my booking because I didn't-
Well, that's all, you can just go on.
I was just asking questions about the actual plan at this part of the, the things that are added or subtracted. I had a couple of questions there.
Sure, go ahead.
Like, they talked about the catwalk and the boiler.
Then replaced their newer boilers. We bought them used. They were about three years old when we bought them and they've been in for about four years. So, the expected life on those, they indicated to me when they're bought new are about 40 to 50 years. So, those are, they're in, they're in good shape. They're in great shape. Actually, when we were installing them, one of the, I asked the contractor about what he thought the condition of the boilers were and he didn't even have any idea that they were actually used boilers. So, so, those were replaced and those are in good shape. We then changed out four blowers out in the main part of the rink that are located in each of the corners. So, those have all been replaced. So, when we talk about boiler replacement, it's actually phase three of the boiler system, which includes the steam piping that goes throughout the building, the blowers in the corridors, and then, the potential of whether or not to convert that from steam to hot water. And that's, that's another conversation that we've been in discussions with, with the mechanical engineers. I think what they've indicated here in our last meeting, which happened late last week, is that as part of the base bid, the plan will be to replace all of the blowers and the steam traps that go with each blower. And then, the alternates would be to replace the piping and then, the alternate B would be to potentially change over from steam to hot water. There's, there's some things involved with that changeover that are pretty involved. And so, they're indicating that it's not necessarily a negative to stay with steam if that's, if that's what we end up doing. So, I think our second option beyond changing the blowers out would be to change all of the piping out. And then, so, the catwalk was a project that was not mentioned as part of the feasibility study. It's a necessity from the standpoint that our staff needs access to areas that are up above the main floor in the seating areas. And it's also an access point for stagehands when they come in to do setup and tear down for shows. So, the catwalk is original to the building and went through their work, MSA's work along with their structural engineers. The structural engineers have indicated that they recommend that that be replaced. So, that was again, a project that was not mentioned or discussed as part of that feasibility study. It's an additional project that we're putting on as an alternate, we're going to accomplish that.
There is a tie-off currently with the existing catwalk. So, there is some concern of the condition, but there is a current tie-off. So, we're not, you know, people are still safe to be up there. There does not leave them, you know, hanging. Well, they may be left hanging, but they'll be hanging.
I mean, tied off to the-
There's a safety cable.
Yeah.
They put a harness- That they put a harness on.
Everything is OSHA compliant.
Yeah.
Great.
Mrs. Knight, please go ahead with the roll call. To see, this is, the question is, is it okay to move forward with this?
President, is there going to be any order on the, that may quite interesting?
This is a committee meeting, and normally we do not do that at a committee meeting. We will have question and answer time at council. There will be questions prior to our vote at council, and there will be questions at the end of council. Mrs. Knight?
Yes.
Mr. Neath?
Yes.
Mr. Twiss?
Yes.
Mr. Phillips?
Yes.
Mr. Tremblay?
Yes.
Mr. Kendall?
Yes.
Mr. Clark?
Yes.
Mrs. Oda?
Yes.
Mrs. Snead?
Yes.
So unanimous recommendation.
Okay, so we will move forward then for a vote on council.
Okay.
And that concludes...
Legislation on the agenda.
Right. That concludes the meeting of the committee of the whole. Thank you.
Thank you.